Maybe they were company, they had the big flusher truck that had the roof.
See, that's why.
Soul wheel or something.
Yeah. Some, most of the companies that we've got in contact with, either their machines are down, or they came out and they tried something and it's so bad that it's not doing anything. So we've had to go through, Duke's works with our insurance company to match whatever grant it is.
Yeah.
So that's who we've been going through to. They like spray foam stuff in the lines, which will soak up into the roots and fill the bridge and then dissolve them, so it's a little bit easier.
Copper's will take foam.
Oh, yeah? Hey, man.
You can, you can buy the canister copper coat that you just have down there, clean out. And it helps a lot.
Dicker.
I'm sitting there, I'm like, I just lost his name, I'm like, beer, oh.
The packets on the table with the stuff.
Well, did you look into any of that?
We'd part the.
Taking that stuff out. You was talking about disassembling the lines.
Oh, yeah, we got a little bit of it, like, the main little parts out. I did figure out part of the reason I had to constantly jump the thing is because whoever did attach the radio to the battery didn't tighten the, uh, the bolt. So once I tighten that bolt, the thing starts every single time now.
And I don't know about that one, so like ours, we have, uh, we have quick disconnects, like you flip a button and it kicks the breaker for the light out.
Yeah, I know, I agree, it should work on some of it, but. When I was looking at some of the wiring, I don't know what they did to it. We got to a point where I'm gonna have somebody just handle it for me, 'cause I'm at a point now where I'm about ready to start cutting wires.
I could go back and play baseball.
Back divider else, that was a big part.
I need to wait my hour to. I wanted to take pictures.
We'll be cool next week.
As soon as I got time, it's soon. I'm like, I'm gonna get it cleaned up.
I'm, I'm more good at than before.
Good. I'm super good. Four is good. Yeah. That's what, I take my phone, people think I'm like, scrolling Facebook, I'm always reading, always reading.
Hey, chief.
What are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Tangle Unlimited is twelve dollars a month.
Hello. City, how are you?
I love it, always reading something. That packet that's on the table, is it like the reports that came in late and the?
If you have experience, then buy packets on my table.
And, um, the.
Have you?
You need another gene?
Look, I need to have it.
Oh.
What? That's what Richard's trying to do. Publications are meeting, this is something I can hold on over the phone.
I couldn't see anything, it was on there. Is that on good court records, serious convictions or something?
I know, yeah. That was supposed to.
Two years ago.
I must, it was something that makes sense, uh, like, in thirty minutes. Like, since yesterday, I had six. Like, just felt like I, yeah, my whole body. Well, that's it, that's it. No, your blood's carrying. The only thing that makes sense is something that has something different than maybe like, that's nobody prior, that doesn't. You have to have, you have to have like ten thousand. I used to. Well, in order to bring everything in, everything, they'll bring enough. It's ten thousand. And there was one, maybe hit like the north, 'cause there's two, um. Yeah, I saw. When they first, yeah, when they first editioned, there's two different editions that are a little different, so the version is a little. You left it, huh? Can we go grab it? Okay. Is it unlocked? So.
Now we're doing it.
Take it in there.
I've been told I have fifteen glasses of water, that's eight ounces, that's like a hundred and forty ounces of water.
Come on.
This is only thirty two ounces.
And they know I ain't going to sit too much.
Haircut.
Stuff about being out there.
There was a section.
And you know, when I was looking through that, um, stuff like.
Get her, get her back up.
They said that they started.
Yeah, thank God, it's still water.
So, but there's here.
Man, I didn't know when they put it in their session, they felt.
They were talking about.
Yeah, they used to, they broke my.
I brought extras of those.
I haven't done John like.
I could show a full set, somebody would have that. Dog got spired, it was not, that looks exactly.
Is this one of the ones at the table? I think it's.
P lamp? I'm sure. I'm sure.
I said that as soon as I saw it.
You know, he went across the firewalls, back to the fireplace. Got us one, one way coming out.
I know, we'll get there. And I didn't even forget it, 'cause they're right here. We might, we might. It was just.
You're surprised how many people put them in there.
Oh, my God, I.
Not realizing, you know, hot idea. Hours.
This guy, he had it, I mean, yes, the problem was, he brought some money. How do you do direct work, it's not like. So, but I mean, this wire is something, this was something right there, we didn't. It is dripping everywhere, you did the, you just milked the wire.
It's a majority of the.
That'll do. He couldn't get that second burner to crack.
I know it.
But, but, does that, does a motion have to be made?
No, I believe it's just, we accept it as presented. Let me give it to.
Do you have the wording to the item?
It was just this topic about, uh, consideration, discussion, action on leasing up the organs. And then.
Was the thing on here about?
And that would also cover the hunting at the Sloane's, the one, the Joplin?
Would that cover that?
I would probably say that would probably be the thing.
Yeah.
Just as a property location. And more than one.
Do I hear your name?
No, I hear that one again.
Two items were wrapped off the agenda, and I'll read that to you in a minute after the meeting begins. Rocky's not gonna be here, so no. Town of Tryon Board of Trustees' regular meeting, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, six P M., First Baptist Church, one twenty-two North First, Tryon, Oklahoma. Number one, call the orders. Number two, roll call. Sandy here.
Richard here.
Mary Lee here.
Amanda here.
Number three, consideration and action on consent agenda. Three point one, approval of the minutes for December third, twenty twenty-four, and December tenth, twenty twenty-four. Those were in our packet, weren't they? Yeah, I already read those.
I didn't think that was a power order.
I did not either.
I wasn't here for the December thirty, I was here for the tenth.
So we'll take the votes individually. Three point one point one, December third, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for December third, twenty twenty-four.
Amanda, second.
Mary Lee, yes.
Sandy, yes.
Three point one point two, December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented for December tenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Sandy, yes.
Mary Lee, yes. Three point two, approval of monthly department head reports. And I did email the list of how everyone's to you, but I also put a paper copy on the table. Is that it right there? Yeah, she bring that packet, um, yeah. Under the report? Yep. General Lee's not here. Got a question about the library account beginning the month in a negative. Of twenty nine ninety-nine. Is that in, in or against? Reimbursement, or, right under reimbursement, it said, beginning balance negative twenty nine ninety-nine. And it says our. Net income is a negative one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two fifty-one, meaning we've spent that much more than the state gives.
I believe part of that is because some of the grant funds were left until June of this year, that were spent until July first, but I'm not positive, so. I would have to look closer. And I know that this one forty-nine splash loan is not supposed to come out, but it was refunded in the December one. And we just talked about that two days, and she specifically asked me about it, it was a program we were buying for the kids iPads, and it seems they haven't been taken for. Brittany, we may need to show her again how to do it, 'cause she prints the entire thing, so, like, we have from May twenty-seventh to twenty-one, all the way till now, rather than just January. Coming December.
So the monthly reports.
And it looks like her quick books needs to be gone, like, it's showing some really weird balances, like, it's not.
It's not through that, through that a lot of it.
'Cause it's sho, it's showing the balance on the account is the same, like, we haven't spent any money since twenty twenty-one, but it's also all coming out, so the profit and loss is way off.
Three point two, approval of monthly department head reports.
I'm making a motion to approve monthly.
Mary Lee, yes.
Amanda, yes.
Three point three, approval of monthly financial reports, tabled from twelve, three twenty-four, three point three point one, the November twenty twenty-four financials. I didn't see it, I mean, those that.
I know the most one, we approved the financial reports for November of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
Yes. Mary Lee, yes. Three point, three point two, December twenty twenty-four, financial reports, I didn't see anything of them, I went over them last time.
Do you want to approve library as is, or do we need to get a new one? And just ask.
We need to approve it as is and then look at any adjustments that are made at the beginning of the month.
I'll go through it with her this week, I have, or probably the beginning of next week, I have.
So, December twenty twenty-four claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial reports for December twenty twenty-four.
May the second.
Mary Lee, yes. Number four, consideration of items removed from consent agenda. There were two items left off of the agenda, and according to the state of Oklahoma, an agenda can be amended at the beginning of a meeting in Oklahoma as long as the majority of the board approves the change. The change would be to add the fundraiser for the hunt out at the Lagoons, would that be for the fire department? Here's a goes to the face department, but it's also in the board's, uh, the board's choice or decision after the committee votes, so it can be changed to the fire department. And then the other one was allowing, uh, variance on the ordinance within city limits for hunting at the Sloane Pond. So those two changes have to be voted on by the coordinate board.
On the Lagoon one, um, I don't have a problem with. On the hunting on Sloane's Pond, I think there, it's, is it in city limits?
Well, what we'd have to do is put it on the agenda and then vote on it as a board.
Right.
So the vote right now is to add those two things to the agenda or not.
I would add them, I say yes.
So somebody needs to make a motion.
I make the motion that we add the items of consideration, discussion, and action on hunting, or leasing the Lagoon property for hunting, and also consideration, discussion, and action on allowing hunting inside city limits on the Sloane property.
I second the motion.
Richard, yes.
Mary Lee, yes. So. We will place those as number nine point seven and nine point eight. Do you have an extra ten?
Yeah.
We can go back and.
I'll give it to you.
There's an extra one if you.
Number three point four, approval of monthly claims.
I have all my other packet. Did we do the claim?
No, we skipped over it. But I missed that we had to do the claim.
I make the motion that we approve the monthly claims.
I'll second the motion.
Mary Lee, yes.
Amanda, yes.
Consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, that's the one I skipped to. Number five, proposal of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Tryon entering into executive session in accordance with Title twenty-five, Section two oh seven, subsection V one, discussing the appointment, hiring and appointment, promotions, demotions, disciplining or resignation of any individual, salary, public official, or employee, Lex Meyer, letter of resignation. Number two, James Hodgson's letter of resignation.
I make a motion entering executive session.
Amanda, second.
Oh, Mary Lee, yes.
Hi, Aunt Charles.
Yeah?
This is a friend from high school.
Aww.
There's a lot, that was the last time they popped us in here last time. Yeah, that's when they had a payment.
Well, they, they didn't, they didn't accept it, and. My. My half team.
The end of the weekend before that translation, I was actually.
Oh, that's. It's crazy. They're just gonna talk about it. They're gonna talk about it.
You still.
Yeah.
I had the cred.
They do.
I slept for two days.
They do some crazy stuff that don't make no sense.
That was my contract, because I submitted a grant to.
And by the time I got back to the field, I thought I was gonna die.
I'm not in a hurry, I'm not. No, maybe it's weird. We're gonna find out over the weekend if the translation was actually.
Number six. Number six, re-enter regular meetings from executive session.
I'm making a motion to re-enter regular meetings from executive session.
May the seconds.
Sandy, yes. Mary Lee, yes. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and action on matters discussed in executive session. Number one, Lex Meyer, letter of resignation.
I move that we accept Lex Meyer's letter of resignation as written.
Sandy, seconds.
Mary Lee, yes. Number two, James Hodgson's letter of resignation.
I make a motion that we accept James Hodgson's letter of resignation.
I'll second the motion.
Mary Lee, yes. Mary Lee, yes. Number eight. Resolution, Lincoln County Election Board. We have to do a resolution since election's coming up, like, updated every election cycle, and that's the new one. That's the need us to approve and get turned in. Twenty twenty-five, Town of Tryon Resolution Notice of Election, Resolution Number twenty twenty-five zero one. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Tryon, Oklahoma, that said Board of Trustees hereby authorizes and proclaim proclaims the holding of an election in said town on the first day of April twenty twenty-five for the purpose of electing three candidates to the Board of Trustees, two for a four-year term, and one for a two-year unexpired term, provided, however, for the purpose of nominating candidates for such office, all must be qualified as provided by the laws of the state of Oklahoma. Be it further resolved that the offices of said town to be elected are nominated at large and elected at large pursuant to the Tryon Town Code and ordinance on file with the county election board. Be it further resolved that each candidate must be qualified elector by virtue of being a resident and a registered voter within the town for at least six months prior to filing a declaration of candidacy. Be it further resolved that candidates for each office shall file their declaration of candidacy with the Lincoln County Election Board Chandler, Oklahoma, between the hours of eight A M. through five P M. February third through February fifth, twenty twenty-five, passed and approved this fourteenth day of January twenty twenty-five.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution for the Lincoln County Election Board.
I'll second the motion.
Amanda, yes.
Mary Lee, yes. Due to Rocky's absence, Brittany. Your type of the president? Yeah, but they need it by when? Tomorrow. So, I'm going to just put it along. Sorry. Bad shot. Number nine, miscellaneous, nine point one, consideration, discussion, and action on the tiny home lots.
We have a couple of different families that have came in and asked. They're in the process of wanting to move some tiny homes in here. But they don't, they barely have two lots with the tiny homes. I told them that they could come in, we put on the agenda to see about moving the tiny homes in here. The only thing that we have on our code books that states anything about moving anything in, building anything, is that they have to have four lots, which is equivalent to ten thousand square feet, and they don't have that home property. So I told them I would address the board and let them know what their plans are because there's one of them that has bought a couple of lots by the water tower, North Water Tower, and they're wanting to move in three or four tiny homes in that section and use them as like rentals or whatever.
We do have the ordinance about mobile home facilities.
Yeah, and I had told them that as well. But they said that as of right now, they were still interested in doing just the one. But I had also told them too, like sometimes the board will get variances. But the thing that's on the code book is the ten thousand square feet is one thing that might be an issue, but it's not even...
The property north of the water tower, we just talking about that corner piece where...
Right before the tree.
With the tree.
So it's not...
They're looking, they're looking into wanting to buy that, but I had told them what the issue with that property is, that the landowner had already told me that it's in probate, and she's not gonna fight it, so she can't sell it.
So that only leaves that small piece.
Yes, yeah.
And there's not much property on that piece.
That's a petition for a variance that the homeowner has to provide. The size of the home, the size of the property presented to the board.
Yeah, and I had also told her that as well, her husband that came in, I told her that as well. But I also told him I'd put it on the agenda today so that you guys can at least get it on the radar.
And he said there was a couple.
Yeah, and there's another one out east of Armory Oak in Maine that we're trying to like build, Elton's old houses, or was, out by the apartments.
Oh, okay.
Or the properties.
Yeah.
Jim had sold that to somebody, and they're wanting, going through the process of wanting to build on that as well. They're clearing out land and having somebody come and tear down the house. But the... They're building like a metal building, but part of the building is going to be, they're trying to build a not-for-profit, not-for-profit place out there. We didn't tell them exactly what they're, like, what they're doing as far as a business or whatever. But part of the business is going to be like a one-bedroom apartment that they're building onto it. But on the other end of the property, they're wanting to bring in tiny homes. I told them as well with the ordinance states on the size of the property, there's enough back there, but... To put a couple back there, but they're talking like several, like five or six, and there's not enough back there. And I told them the same thing, that they would have to bring in their plans.
Which property is that?
On Oak in Oklahoma, do you know where the apartments are?
Yeah.
It's like catty corner from the apartments, it's a brick home.
That's a lot of data.
Yeah.
They've got four point seven acres.
There's actually six, yeah, there's like six acres there, but they have some plans with buildings on the main part of the property. It was gonna divide the...
The rest in.
Yeah, the east into smaller lots of the tiny homes.
What range consider a tiny home?
They just sort of tiny home like little, like the tough sheds, kind of like what Roger Wecker.
Okay. Hundred, hundred, twice per thing?
Yeah, yeah.
I...
And they, they also talked about bringing RVs and doing RV hookups up there. I told them that the code says about RVs and the travel drivers and stuff as well. But then you have to adjust the plans. But I told them that they could get plans together, drawn up or something, that you could, you put back on the agenda and ask, you know, bring it to the board's attention. We may get very...
It's kind of a double-edged sword because you want to encourage people to come to town, but you need to know what their plans are, so...
And I also told them too that some of the spaces, they would have to put in new silver tap and water tap fees because each dwelling would have to have its own connection. So I told them what, as of right now, what those costs are as well.
How many tiny homes were they talking about?
The one on North, with North Maine was like five or six.
Okay.
The one over here by...
The tower.
At least three.
I'd have an issue with that one, the one on North, I mean, one over here would not be bad.
Right.
I say they come with a proposal to the board and let us hear. Let me keep an open mind about it until I hear more. So no action on nine point one? Nine point two, consideration, discussion, and action on the building project.
The only update that we have is that the contractors already got a hold of the inspector, then we've got the inspector's contract signed as well. They're working together to get...
The engineering...
Yeah, the engineering plans drawn up because that's what the inspector has required of us to just have our basis. That could take three or four weeks, or we can have maybe into it. So they're thinking that beginning of February is probably when actual start to be able to do so.
Number nine point three, consideration, discussion, and action on the safety program and emergency action plan.
We talked, I think I made email do, copy of this, I can't remember if Janeway sent it to me or email. This is part of the action plan that we had to make for the Labor Department, report that I was up about last time. Janeway had put that together. Three of the things that we needed to be able to market off of our Labor Department paperwork is combined into that report. I just need it approved, agreed upon, wondering what you need to do so I can send it to the Labor Department. No, it was freezing, well, I'm gonna turn it out. Sweatpants.
So will you fry eggs on your face?
So... The purpose of the safety program on the page four. It says our first quote, let's see, program is to promote and foster our safety first culture, comply with the Occupational Safety and Health Administration's OSHA Emergency Action Plan Standard. Before OSHA or after OSHA, it needs to say P E O S H because that's the Public Employees Occupational Safety and Health Administration in Oklahoma, P E O S H. P I O S.
Yeah. And put that before...
P I O S has adopted all of OSHA's requirements.
You say put it before OSHA.
Did they want this posted anywhere?
They said just post that sitting home.
Okay, and then keep the file, anybody, for request?
Need to make sure that the boys know what's happening.
Yeah. I didn't have a problem with it other than that. That guy flipped it up today. Still on my phone.
And we're still in the process of putting some, get like a training list together as well. I think the training thing is one thing.
Did you read it in your email? Did you see it?
Yeah.
Did you send me any email?
I can't remember because I've sent a few things, so I can't remember. That would be helpful if I sent it out. I thought I did, just so you guys have time to look at it, but I don't.
I knew it was coming after the report.
Yeah, we got it. It was December fifth, that's probably, we don't remember.
When was it?
December fifth.
Okay.
I remember reading it.
I was gonna say, because I'm looking back and...
You were saying it was a month ago.
Had to have Christmas in years. Christmas, very good.
That is than mine.
Yeah.
You're throwing in the wind.
And like spitting into the wind. That's basically a pet and paste, I don't know what's been stated.
We need a motion?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we go ahead and adopt the act, the safety program and emergency plan.
You want me to add the P S?
Oh, and to add the P E O S H to the list.
I'll second your motion.
Mandy, yes. Mary Lee, yes.
Number nine point four, consideration, discussion, and action on policy and procedures manuals.
That is not being taken.
Taken.
I make a motion we table that till the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. On policy procedure manual.
Mandy, yes.
Mary Lee, yes. We do need to have a meeting as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Nine point five, consideration, discussion, and action on the D E Q letter.
This is the end of the D E Q letter that came in the mail. They did call us in emails, a letter as well.
Did we get this one?
That one just came the other day, so I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at that. Kind of looks like it's one of us like same things with the other letter, it stated, that is regarding the Elton situation. I talked to Andrew on the phone, he said what they would recommend because I believe it was in December, if I'm mistaken. Elton had court that day over the citation that he was given. D E Q strongly suggested that we wait until, like, up his court date further out until we had a chance to get the letter first. The letter states that, well, the letter in the conversation with Andrew states that they would suggest us trying to sit down and make a plan with Elton as far as, since he's under the understanding that of the issues that D E Q is having and that we are getting a hold of for it, that he needs to be in understanding that we need to be on the same page, that the area needs to be cleaned up, you can't leave the motors and all that stuff. Try to come to a decree that will work with both parties. Get it in writing, everybody sign it. If everything stays in compliance, then we can move forward and there's no issue. If we can't get on the same page and he can't stay in compliance, then we'll move forward with different actions to try to get the well situation straightened up.
So basically a mediation.
Yeah. And then also will give us time to figure out what we need to, because they said as well with the citation, because I have notified Elton that we're bumping his court date to March until we can get this straightened up. Because they said that's another thing that the board might consider is drop in the citation if he can stay in compliance. Or we can move forward with legal actions as far as deciding him thin. So that's something that we need to think about as well, or you guys need to think about as well, what we need to do with the citation.
Well, I think we need to set up the mediation with him and see where it goes from there before the town does anything, I would think.
In our trial date for every three months, or our next trial date is in March, just to give you a timeframe. March twentieth is our next trial date.
The twentieth?
Uh huh.
And I'm assuming that we've started the E D M Rs?
Yes, yeah. The E D M Rs are actually all caught up, so that's something that we just, we have to figure out. Because on their side, it's like on the system, it shows like we're actually up to date on all that. But on their end, it's not, it's showing that we're like a couple of years behind.
Depends on when.
They're having some system issues of them being on the same page. So I think they've actually talked to Scott Maydell or something to see what's going on with the system.
So do we need to make a motion and have briefly try to set up a mediation with Elton?
I think in February, we're going to interview the attorney. I don't think we should set up a meeting until after that.
You want me to contact that one, just let them know we've talked about it, we got the letter, this is what our plans are, we're not going to set the date until after we have...
Yeah.
No action.
Nine point six, consideration, discussion, and action on opening the citizens to address the board. When we make the decision, it was temporary.
Right, we figured two or three months, it's been five.
I don't have a problem opening it up, you man, but I think it needs to still have a... I don't have a problem opening it up, you man, but I think it needs to still have a limit on it. And I think it needs to stay pertaining to the agenda items. Yes, that's by law, that's what. Not here and off in every other direction. It needs to be a time set strictly to discuss anything on the agenda.
I think that's fair. I think coming to the, like, if, come to the office, have your item put on the agenda, and that's something to provide time for. That's the way we've always done it. And I think time limits are wise, that it's respectful of everyone's time that's here, but like...
I think the public to adjust the board is different than having things put on the agenda.
That's fair.
I, I think that, you know, someone has something that requires direct board attention, like the tiny homes or something. Those things, public to adjust the board should be something about something on the agenda. Oh, that kind of did. Richard, what would you suggest for time limit?
I always think we start with like three or five minutes. Keep it to what we have before, which is short. But that's almost, it's something we can figure that may need more time. You can always extend it if needed. The board and people are talking, if we can pass the three minutes or five minutes.
And one of the things that caused some of the uproar was bringing six people to the meeting and asking them to give you their minutes. I don't think we should allow that. That's not something we've ever done. It's not something any town that I know of has ever done. But... You know, the six different people wanting individually speak for their three minutes, that's different.
It's a tender subject. Like, I don't want to say, I don't want people to address the board because it's not what we're here for. Like, I want to hear what people are concerned about. I just don't want it to turn into a bashing session on either side, either us or anyone else.
I agree. Yes, 100%. That's why I think it needs to pertain to anything on the agenda, the time limit. I agree. Somebody needs to make, what did you have in mind, Richard? Because we're talking around you.
That's basically what I was thinking about. Just being able to let the people come back and talk about items on the agenda or things that bother them. If they can put it on the agenda if they have to, or something the board needs to hear. I mean, her, you can meet, both meet.
You and I both voted on temporarily, did you?
I said two or three.
I said two or three months, you used to temporary, if I'm right.
Yeah. So somebody needs to word a motion including the time pertaining to... My opinion, if there are several, I would go at three minutes.
I think three minutes is fair for this.
Okay, two or three minutes. I'll make a motion that we, uh, open the discussion to citizens to address the board again on agenda items with a set time limit at this time of three minutes and not sure the time between other people.
I said pick a moment.
Sammy, yes. Maybe the yes. Item nine point seven.
Fundraiser.
Fundraiser selling tickets to bow hunts at the lagoons with the money going to the fire department. What?
I said, don't shoot by that station.
That's why it's bow hunts only.
It's a good fundraiser, people actually.
Fight on it, enjoy it.
Would that interest you to?
Yes.
How would we do the pricing? Like, just like open bids?
That's what we get for. Do we have a, do we want to set up a minimum?
I think we did, did we? I don't, I don't know of a minimum. I, I have, I have something though. Because I was very against employees of the town being able to bid on it. I don't believe that that should be allowed. If you are a board member, work for the utility department, the fire department, I don't believe that would, I don't believe it would, I didn't think then, I don't believe now, that it gives the appearance of honesty and openness. I didn't like it. And the fact that twice it was won by a police officer really bothered me. So... So we exclude employees and just, I don't know if you just want to set a limit and then take bids on it, or we'd have to publish it, run ads, open, and we'll run the ad in pushing for free. I don't know what.
I was gonna post them in three different ones, and that one's just a little less.
Yeah.
But we don't usually post till July or August, right? Because it's for deer hunting.
We always posted in June or July so that they had time to go scout it and decide where they wanted to put their blind and set up their blind.
Yeah.
Would you like to set some of the pricing and stuff like that, how we're gonna do the bids?
Um, can we not just do, uh, sealed bid?
Okay.
No, that's how we've done it.
That's how we've done it in the past. And no minimum? How many months is that for, actually, that they would give?
So season.
Begins.
October to tomorrow. Ends tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
I guess there's like a time limit for them to be there, like I don't want to be checking lagoons and somebody be hunting in the woods behind me.
I don't think you can restrict them if you're gonna.
No, they have to be restricted.
They'll have all access to them.
And that, it has something.
And they usually don't mess around the lagoons, it's not that close.
Oh, okay, and there's a just secondary access.
Yeah.
No, they'll have access to the gate.
So October, November, December.
She has to work.
What does the lease go for? What do we have out there, 15 or 20 acres?
I thought it was 11.
It's 11? My brain says minimum bid 150, but... I mean sealed bids, somebody could bid at a bit of $51 and win it if no one else. So does someone have a?
What are the, the waste dates? Like, whether when's, what is the rest dates?
What do you say?
I think it's October 15th to January 15th, I believe. I know it's tomorrow, January 15th.
At least just say full season.
Yeah.
So access August and September for scouting.
Did you decide on a minimum?
October 1st, 2025 to January 15th.
A minimum or no minimum?
150.
150.
What was it then? October 1st of 2025 to January 15th, 2026.
So should we, since this is an added agenda item, should we write a complete agenda item with all of the details and have it on the next agenda, February agenda? That would add it. That way all the wrinkles can be. Nine point eight, hunting in, within the city limits at Jerry Sloan's pond. Now, are we talking again?
Yeah, we're going to hunt on the pond. North House property goes up in that, that field.
Fortune of it is out of city limits.
None of the ponds, absolutely none of the ponds, the
I don't know where the property is.
From Oklahoma Street, city limits goes one half mile.
Up to the cemetery.
Which is up to the cemetery.
Which is all the swamp properties.
And he's not even one that, he's not funded either.
Yeah.
But according to the, another one that brought this to my attention, he said that he's talked to the Iowa tribe. I guess, uh, has permission from Sloan to duck hunt on the ponds. I think he's decided he can talk to Kenny. They all said that he would have to refer it back to you guys. They didn't have a problem with it. But with how our co-overs wrote and the shooting inside City Limits, it's a, it would have to be brought to you guys to get permission in the area, and what do you guys feel about it?
I believe shooting within the city limits, state law says shooting within so many feet of a residence. But you're allowed to shoot within the city limits if something is, some wildlife is threatening your property.
Yeah.
Or your livestock, but I, I... It's a can of worms. You know who gets to hunt where and why and I just, sorry.
I can think of these four ponds that are within about the same distance from the road to it.
Yes, sir.
I just want to address right quick, because it said that we said we didn't have a problem with it. From our standpoint, we did not tell him we didn't have a problem with it. We told him that city code can't trump state law. If we are called out there, we will have to enforce state law if it's within those parameters, shooting within a residence of so many feet. So he's aware we'll take enforcement action. But we're not coming out there to check him, but wildlife laws permit, uh, do not permit shooting within so many feet of papered roofs.
Right.
Um, I just have a problem with it. I don't, I, I like the kid, I like the family. I don't have anything against them.
I appreciate that the question was asked, rather than just go ask forgiveness, not permission, yeah, like, I, but it's a slippery slope.
Yeah, and if you... And the truth is, if he's given permission and someone is harmed, what is our liability? I mean, I don't know. It's up for a board vote. Consideration, discussion, and action on allowing duck hunting at Jerry Sloan's pond. My answer would be no. Have to make a motion.
That we do work on.
No, we just have to make a lo, a motion. Will duck hunting be allowed on Jerry Sloan's pond? Will, uh, variance be granted for duck hunting?
Just as a question, can I make a motion as a question?
You can say...
Anybody else?
I make a motion that no hunting.
There we go, that's what I'm saying. I make a motion that no hunting is allowed on Sloan property as the property is within city limits and falls under that ordinance.
Sammy, second?
Richard, yes?
Maybe, yes. Number 10, reports of officers and boards, 10.1 consideration, discussion, and action on the Iowa tribe police report. I know.
It is a big one.
I was speed reading through that. They were busy. This is just the month of December, is that correct?
I believe so. We sent some other ones on request, but we also sent just December.
This is a busy December. Did you have anything to add to it? Did you need to tell us anything?
No, ma'am, not unless you all have any questions about anything in particular in the report. I think we're keeping it, keeping it vague here.
They should have been on the packet that was sitting with people.
Yeah. Yeah. No.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we accept the Iowa tribe police report.
I'll second your motion.
Maybe yes.
Maybe yes. Number 10.2, Leslie Wilborn Grant Administration Update. My favorite person.
How is everybody?
Good, how are you?
I'm very good. Um, hey, so I wanted to just give you a quick status update on the TSET grants, remember we have two that you have approved and will be applying for. And the deadline is coming up, February 12th, so I hear from a very reliable source that the public library put together some goals and objectives.
Did at least Ms. Janley did that all on her?
Or I'm wondering if somebody here could ask if she could send me a copy of that, because I think that that will be a nice tie-in to the construction ready grant, where we're gonna build out the storybook walk. And that ties directly into that. I don't know how many TSET applications would show, I mean, a public library has that much support, so I think that would give us a little bit of an advantage over other towns that are applying. So if somebody could ask her to send that to me, I can incorporate it into the narrative and the documents. I show, and correct me if I'm wrong, your next board meeting is February 4th, 2025, is that correct? And the reason I ask is because that's extremely convenient, because the deadline for the grant is February 12th, so I will just bring all of the budget documents, um, and... So I will just bring all of the budget documents and that way the mayor can sign them right there in person. That would speak convenience. You've already approved it, so it's nothing that we have to do official, but Rick, I did go ahead and just to cover all bases. And I sent you an email to put it on the agenda, just so, in case there is anything that comes up. TSET is using a new system. They've gotten away from the smart sheets and they've actually gone to a fancier system. So the application process will be different and the first round will be all computer automated. And so it'll actually go through a couple of rounds before a person even actually looks at our application. So they've invested quite a bit of money in that application, so we'll see how it goes. So does anybody have any questions for me about the TSET grants? There's the two ones, the construction and then the planning, so. Perfect, all right. I also just want, because it does kind of tie in with the TSET initiatives. I just wanted, I don't know if it had been brought to the board's attention or not, but last year I organized the legislative breakfast and it was the first time that I like really understood that, you know, we can all get upset and mad that we have dirt roads and they're not paved. But until you actually understand what or where the funding comes from to work on dirt roads, you start appreciating and understanding that especially in Lincoln County, you know, we're kind of, well, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage. There's no magic donor that's going to come give us a bunch of money to pay for our dirt roads. So I was asked again to be the organizer of it this year, and so I accepted. But I accepted it with the fact that last year was my first year. The person Tommy Smith did it 20 years before that. And the way that Tommy Smith did it was he chose towns that had chambers. If you didn't have a chamber, you were not on his list. Towards the end of last year, Representative Kevin Wallace and Senator Rand Green both asked me if I would reach out to some of the towns who didn't have chambers, which means more work for me. And that's why they were asking, and I said yes. So last year we had our first Carney, because Carney doesn't have a chamber. So we had our first Carney legislative breakfast. So a couple of months ago, I reached out to Ms. Brittany and Kimberly and asked if they would like for try-in. They have its first legislative breakfast. And they said yes, and so we have it scheduled for Friday, February 7th. And so we're going to meet here. We've invited obviously both Senator Rand Green and Representative Jim Shaw. And so it's on their calendars. It is very early in the legislative year, so, you know, depending on which committee they get assigned to or they are leading, might change. February 7th, Friday, February 7th. It'll be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. And so we obviously invite everyone in the community. I'll help make some posters and flyers and I can give that to Brittany so you can put it on Facebook and on the website. And, you know, I would just ask the community to understand and respect that, you know, having and griping and, you know, being mad because of something, you know, it's really an educational opportunity. It's very rare that you actually get to meet in person the individuals that are at the state capitol. And they are more than willing to share, this is what's going on, and this is how a committee works. This is how the budget works. This is how your tax dollars work. And it really gives you an opportunity to learn. And so I think this is really a nice opportunity that they're both, you know, willing to come and, you know, come to try-in. Immediately after, I am going to be asking the mayor and if the vice mayor can attend, I am going to take them on a little tour of Tryon because I think Tryon is a perfect example of a small town that is struggling with some economic hardships. And so I think it would be very important for them to see firsthand that, you know, this is where the city hall is. And it's here because let me take you to the old city hall and let me let you see, you know, that it is dilapidated and it can't be used. And then I'm going to take them to where the new one is being built and where the TSET part is hopefully being built with the funding. Because getting letters of support from them is very important. And I think if they saw it firsthand, it would, you know, be obviously very easy to get those letters of support. So I'm inviting everybody and we'll put that on the agenda and I think that'll be an opportunity for Tryon.
That's great.
So anyway.
Thank you.
I'm not finished yet. I know. Okay, so I'm not sure if I know this answer, so I apologize if I should know and I don't know. But does Tryon have a lot of fire departments? All right, so do you need or have any use for or purpose of a slip-on tanker?
Yes.
All right, well, maybe you and I could meet. The Department of Interior Office of Wildlife and Fire has opened up a grant opportunity, which is no matching, which is what you guys love to hear. And an opportunity for you, which is you, so I will work with you and we can submit that it is just for the slip-on tanker, the gauges and all of that, but it doesn't include some things like hoses. There's certain things it doesn't. But we can meet, I don't know if you can hang around immediately after. I can get your contact information and that way I can work with you on it and we can get that submitted.
Go ahead.
Does that work? Okay, not a problem. And then my very last one is I had met with Travis Henry, who is the ORW expert, which I know that you guys know very well. We met and really just had a, just a very honest conversation about Lincoln County and the state of Lincoln County. And so one of the things that he expressed, and I have gotten to see firsthand what he's talking about. And that is he and I are partnering up. We have scheduled, but unfortunately we're going to have to reschedule because we have sick people. We have schedules that have been impacted by the snow and all of that. We're going to have an emergency response plan workshop. And the reason why we're doing this is we need to ensure especially small towns like Tryon, and you're not alone. There's other towns in the same situation. We need to have really solid business process plans and have a documented approach to if there is ever a severe weather emergency, on who does what after that. And let me tell you kind of what I'm talking about. The city of Shawnee lost out on a lot of FEMA grant money after the tornado basically went from one end of Kikapu all the way to the other. And a lot of it wasn't anyone's fault, there's no one to blame. It's just, there is a lot to document. And documenting while the disaster is occurring and immediately after is the best way to go. But then that documentation has to be handed off, well, luckily you have me. So now that documentation will be handed off to me and then I can immediately start working with FEMA to get that grant funding. Shawnee's not the only one. The city of Stroud was when the tanker wall was taken, a lot, I mean, a huge amount of funding opportunity. They have a lot of, you know, horror stories that they could share with you. And it really boiled down to you got to have those processes and people who know what to do in place. So it's just reactionary and then you can hand it off to someone like me that can then take that and put the documents together. Because the FEMA reimbursement for grants process is extremely difficult. It is not easy. And if you just don't have one or two pieces of documents, then you could be missing out on funds. And so Travis Henry and I would just like to team up together and really just take care of our Lincoln County towns and cities. And so we're actually invited all of the towns and cities that I represent in Lincoln County. We're going to have it at Stroud, we're going to have it at Stroud City Hall. They've offered their city hall area for us to use to hold the workshop. And then we're going to go after to the Rock Cafe and have lunch. So we will find a new date that works better with everyone's schedule so that we can just talk about why it's important, what we need to do. And then each of the cities and towns can go back and start thinking, okay, well, you know, we only have these two staff. But if a tornado did come through, you know, certain person needs to do this and the next person needs to do this. But it all results in getting that documentation to me so that that way I can start organizing it and looking at the releases as to what's available.
I know in 2007, when we had the big ice storm, we were the only community within the area that had a response plan.
Good, but yes.
And I think Carney ended up almost bankrupt over the ice storm damage. We didn't lose any money, we were reimbursed for everything because we had followed the steps of the plan.
See, now that I know that I get to use that as a positive example of our workshop about someone is trying to have a place. But no, it's a good thing. And, you know, even Stroud, you know, it was just, it was a matter of having the right people, them knowing what to do. And even now, I don't know how many of you know Gail Thornton, she's the Stroud City Clerk. She's been there for years. She's actually getting ready to retire in a couple of years. And she has a lot of, you know, horror stories. And it was just, they didn't know, they thought they were doing it right. And then when it came down to it, it was too late to fix it. And so they, you know, they as well, they're just now in a spot where they're really starting to recover. And again, it's hard to recover from losing that city tax revenue that they used to have from the mall. So they're still recovering. So anyway, that's my report and thank you very much and keep doing a great job.
Thank you. Would you put that, we used to have an emergency management team. And our response plan was I might still have my blue book, but it was a blue bound book with... But there were 10 people, everybody was given a job in this list. Like my job was, I was to take the phone book and call everybody in the Tryon. It's a four mile square around Tryon. And if we couldn't reach them, the police chief went to the residents and...
And of course, fire church had something to do and...
And our emergency manager, the Baptist church opened the, this building for, as a shelter. It was, the community really came together 13 days without power.
So what do you want me to put on agenda with emergency?
I say emergency response team and then we can decide an advertiser, an emergency manager and... I do know we only have one person that's been trained on the tornado sirens. And I'd really like to have at least four or five people trained for whoever's in town. I mean, I can drive by them and set them off if I know now.
Yeah, utility. So putting around the next agenda?
The legislative breakfast on 2/7. Do we have anything planned for the food?
And don't feel like you have to, I mean, every town is different. So for example, Stroud, they have theirs at the Stroud High School. And so the cafeteria opens up and everybody just goes through and there's no charge. But for example, Davenport will have it at Scotty B's. Scotty B's will have basically a specialized like buffet, but you pay for the buffet. So, you know, it can be just as easy as, you know, I can bring some donuts. If somebody wants to bring some juice and cups, it does not have to be fancy at all. I mean, the most important thing is that you're opening up the area, inviting them and then, you know, just kind of listening to what they have to say. And then they love to take questions from those that participate as well. So don't, don't feel like you have to do something super fancy, but, you know, we can have...
We can vote on it as well. Let's use some local businesses like wandering brew and daylight parrots and stuff, so they get warm. Or leaving. No. But I know that the brew cares. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it. I have time.
Yeah, I should make cinnamon rolls. All right. Number 11, adjournment.
Make emergency adjournment.
Amanda seconds.
Richard, yes.
Mary Lee, yes. This one's short. Town of Tryon Board of Trustees Utility Meeting, January 14th, 2025, 6:00 PM. First Tryon, First Baptist Church, 122 North First Tryon, Oklahoma. Amended agenda, number one, call to order. Number two, roll call. Mary Lee.
Amanda.
Number three, consideration and action on consent agenda, number 3.1. Approval of the minutes, 3.11, November 2024. We have to vote on them separately. I didn't see anything on the minutes.
I made the motion that we approve the minutes for the November 2024.
I'm only certain I was not... Amanda, please.
Mary Lee, second. 3.1.2, December 2024 minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for December 2024.
Mary Lee, second. 3.2, approval of monthly department head reports.
No yawn.
For some reason, I love the town hall, it's until next Tuesday, she told me, I'm like, okay, give me 20 minutes.
How are the heaters in the wellhouses? Are they working?
Oh yeah, they're, they're working really well.
I think they were new last year, but...
Yeah, I bought them just in case because I didn't know, I didn't know how long those ones had been in the wellhouse, so I didn't have to risk it.
Long enough to curb those.
Sure. This week, luckily, since we're having warmer weather, I can turn them off during the day and give them a break.
Yeah, I guess we have a huge day freeze coming.
Yeah, it's Sunday, I think they're probably going to get 10 inches. We might as well shut them off as much as we can and not run constantly, so this week is helping.
So any motion on approval of department head report? Any questions?
I make a... Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve department head report.
Amanda, second.
Andy, yes. Mary Lee, yes. Number 3.3, approval of monthly financial reports tabled from 12/3/24. 3.3.1, November 2024. Who is John? John Coleman, that's the desk. He's curious. I asked that other meeting though.
Eventually she's going to remember.
Whatever. I didn't see anything on the utility.
I made the motion, we approve the monthly financial report for November 24.
Amanda, yes?
Mary Lee, yes. 3.3.2, December 2024. I haven't noticed anything on that one.
Make a motion, we accept the financial reports from December 24.
I'll second your motion.
Mary Lee, yes. Number 3.4, approval of monthly claims, consideration of items removed from consent agenda. Number five, miscellaneous, 8.1, consideration, discussion, and action on reviewing bid proposals for jobs around town. 8.1.1.
It's supposed to be five, yeah.
What?
We were saying 8.1.5.
5.1?
Yeah.
5.1.1, I can't count.
Apparently Brittany can't.
Manhole cover on Oklahoma. Manhole cover on Oklahoma. Do we have anything that says proposals, bids?
I got bids.
Okay.
I've called, I don't know how many people I called, I don't know, at least three for sure, maybe four. Two or three came out to put bids on those. Nobody got back to me except one, which is the guy who was working on Paula Bass's thing, he bid on that as well. He's going to do that, if we can get that moving. The owner of the house really wanted that done, obviously before winter got here. And I've been telling her, we're on it, we're doing as fast as we can. I can email those, because he did send us the bids in an email. I think one bid, though, he sent twice in the same one, I just need to get another. He bid on our lift station, the manhole cover, and Paula Bass's job.
And the tree removal for that wall that's, just in case.
I'm not pushing that one just yet, because those other ones are priority. Paula Bass's priority, that manhole cover is a priority, I don't know why nobody else wanted to even put a bid on that.
Because it's tri, and they don't wanna come up.
I don't know if that was it, but Kelly did say, you know, like, it's kind of intensive, nice and hard work, you know? So it's cool. But he, you know, he's confident he could do it, and doing a good job.
Do we have a copy of that bid, do we know what that bid is?
I will email those to you, I apologize, I didn't print them, printed them off, I just didn't put them in packets.
So no action on those right now. The lift stations, what are we talking about at the lift station, 5.1.2?
One out by your dad's.
Yeah.
To getting that hooked up correctly, and to where the siren...
There's two pumps.
And then also that it's hooked up to a phone, that it will call the emergency after hours phone. It goes off, so it's not just relying on the siren.
Except for dad.
No, he didn't know.
He just sees the flashing light.
He takes the earplugs out at night, he doesn't hear anything.
We're just to get that back up operational, gets the bolts fixed, the pumps fixed.
Thing that almost like, he quoted that at like 50, 500, 5800.
I do know the people that were looking at that for us, some of them had questions about what horsepower the motor was and stuff, and I didn't have any of that information, so...
Some violating the, somewhere in...
Yeah, somewhere.
I don't think that's a bad, that that's around what the quote was.
We had another electric committee come out and look at it, to do a bid on it. And they came out, it was a lot, but they withdrew, they just said, I think that they weren't comfortable doing that. So they just withdrew their interest in, and then he looked at the electrical panel at the lagoons.
Yeah, I had all the guys that came up, I had them look at both, so.
That should be, the phone systems should be interconnected. So that the phone out at the lagoons also rings to the utility phone.
I've been looking at some different SCADA system stuff, like Carney just had some stuff done to their wells and lagoons. And basically, I can make it to where, if anything did happen at like the lagoons or the wells, then I could get a notification off the work phone. So I was looking at all that kinds of stuff.
Yeah. It used to.
Yeah, we have that system, it's just there's some of this out there that's not working.
Yeah.
Okay. Can we move both of those items to the February meeting, it's two weeks, right?
No, that mean, we've already got Kelly working on Paula Bass's sewer. There was a little accident, he kinda cut his hand last week when he was working on it. So he's gonna come back and finish it when the ground dries up. But that has got to get done, we can't...
No, Paula Bass is different.
Okay.
That's, but that's on these two items, the manhole and the lift station.
Right.
Because we haven't seen the quotes on those.
And for Paula, she'll be back on Monday to fix that, because he's getting his cast off, so.
So 5.1.3, do you wanna update us on Paula's?
I just didn't. It's in the, it's in the works, we're close, that was a mess, but it's...
It was a real... Oh yeah, we got pictures.
Oh, you guys sent them the pictures. Yeah, apparently, it's that tree.
Concrete was in there.
The only thing I can think of is, maybe they ripped the bags open and poured it in, and maybe they didn't tighten... This is the only logical thing I can think of, is whoever did it probably didn't tighten the sewer taps out. They poured the concrete instead of leaving the bags in, and that's my only guess as to how it could have gotten in there. But, yeah, it would be done a little quicker between the accident and then this week, the ground's been so wet, there are many accidents having trouble. So he's gonna, Monday, he gets his cast off, so he can actually handle the thing again. And the ground's gonna be hard, so he can do it.
He said, when does the storm come in?
Like Saturday.
Well, this is supposed to get colder, we actually getting like snow and ice too?
Yes, a chance of some dry snow.
I say, I mean, that's just an update, but faster the bid on Paula's.
Yeah, it should be done before the end of this coming week here. So as soon as he gets back, if there's not much left to be won at all.
5.2, water and sewer tap fees, we have a proposal. It's an ordinance change.
It is an ordinance change, I don't know what's involved in that, but I did get some numbers. With, I think personally, just like I said, that we need to raise those rates. Because it's costing us a lot of money to do those. And now's a really good time, since nobody is moving in and wanting to put a new water sewer tap in.
The last rate increase was in 2008.
Well, I can tell you that I called three different cities or towns near us, Perkins, Carney, and Davenport. And we are definitely...
On the source side.
Far, yeah. If you want us to pass those around, those are their rates for sewer.
The current cost currently right now for a meter and meter box and stuff like that, for our materials, probably?
$400 for a wa, or $450?
$450.
$450.
So you're talking $500 without labor, and we're charging $450?
Yeah, and that's where we need to tell, but how much is the material, and how much is like...
Yeah, how much does it cost? If we do like a new meter, how much is a meter and a meter box?
Like to charge the customer?
We've not ever charged, we've only done two that I remember, and we did not charge them for a meter box or a meter.
But what's our cost on it? What is a meter?
Currently, my meter boxes, the new deal I'm getting all of them is between $100 and $150.
For just the box?
So, yeah, Mr. Westmoreland's been taking care of me and finding good deals for us. That's the box, and it's pretty sturdy.
Are we doing the plastic, can we haft it?
Yeah, this one's got a really heavy duty lid on it. Not, not like, I wouldn't drive over it in a semi truck, but it's heavier than what we have. So it lasts a little longer. And then I can't remember what the numbers are for the meters, but...
Guthrie is even more, but I...
Oh Guthrie, Guthrie's out.
To put Guthrie in there, because they're not really comparable to like our town size. Yeah, we're paying, we're losing a lot of money.
I mean, I'm building Perkins.
At thousands of dollars to put in.
It's over $450. More to go, we can get ourselves, really, us.
Because you're doing it for the people that are asking for it. Should be covered by a cost, that's $750, $800 should at least start.
I think we're, I think we're on the equal ground with our trash and deposits and stuff like that.
Especially now since we have to open a closet to do, to get some sewer lengthened, that's also extra cost on top of all that as well, water taps.
That's what I said.
We saw a building in Perkins.
It's a gold dig.
They think their dirt is worth gold lately. Should have kept my house.
I think I paid $150, and then we raised the rates three years later. Are you having sticker shop, is it kind of like going to buy hamburger, Richard?
Yeah, yeah.
We raised some, some spears to butcher one year, and our daughter named them hamburger and mozzarella.
Should we put the top three tickets together?
Yes, with a proposal. And it has to, I don't know, do we put it on?
We'd have to have an ordinance change.
Yeah, we'd have to have an ordinance change. But I don't think, I think we need to see and agree on what rates to take it to. I don't think we should just write the ordinance, you know, pluck numbers out of the air.
I'm not looking to gouge people, I just, I know like our last ones, it was like $3,000. And we charged like $900 for both sewer and tap. And we, we had ORWA come out, we had to rent, it was just, it was...
Well, that job down on Pecan in Oklahoma ended up costing us $10,000.
Oh, is that when you guys did the shallow water line from that?
More than that, with that extra lines that were hit, I don't know.
Yeah, the gas line that was hit by...
Yes, you know where it is now?
Apparently, it's...
That's how I found, that's how I found some of our water lines.
Okay, so no action on that, add it to the next agenda with proposed prices. Number 5.3, Sandy Munear plumbing invoice.
Sandy had sewer issues at her house, and just like the other customers that we have, we told her that she would have to on her end, get a plumber out or whatever. She got a plumber out, they checked it, it's some treer issues down a certain part of the pipe or whatever going into her supply line, I guess. And, which ended up being on our side and not hers, so she's just asking to have that invoice reimbursed. But hers would be a little different, since she's a board member, we wouldn't be able to put it on her with bill, we'd have to give her a check. So that's why it's on the agenda to see what we can hear about her invoice reimbursed in the form, the cost of the funds.
We do it for every other citizen, she can't vote on it.
Correct, correct.
I make the motion that we...
How much is it?
Reimbursed Sandy Munear for $150 for her plumbing invoice that turned out to be a city sewer issue.
Mary Lee, yes. Number six. Yeah?
Didn't say yes.
Mary Lee says yes. That's a lot, did the checks get signed?
Did we, did we make a motion?
Yes.
They've got good drying abilities.
I make sure to plug in the outlets instead of the little adapters, oh, there's a special adapters?
Thank you, we're saving the shift.
Tuesday's dinner is already scheduled, and it's on our schedule.
Thank you for all your work, ladies.
Yes. My sister in California, she got...
I think we didn't put these tables up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's saving me time for... Well, that's, that's the point. When I was in Alaska, they had a post for that in front of every parking space. You could plug in your, your lock even, but it didn't work, so we got...
See, that's my thing.
A tiny voice for you.
You don't have to be around it.
I actually, I actually used...
We got, we got it done though, but I had to hear. It was a fire light for three hours today. Do not take the elevator. But we had to, I had to get right up there next to it, so it's like, just screaming in my ear. I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I keep saying we're gonna do it, and then I just never have my truck, call and carry.